All right. So we're going to get started, everyone. It's 10:05 on the dot, and it looks like we have everyone here. So let's get rolling. Good morning. This is the August 18th, 2020 hearing for the Health Committee. I'm Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chair of the Committee. Also in attendance, we have Councilmember Clark of the 14th District, a member of the Committee. We are also joined by the bill sponsor, Councilmember Stokes. We have Councilmember Reisinger from the 10th District, a member of the Committee, and Councilmember Slyfer, a member of the Committee from the 5th District. We are also combined staff in the President's Office, Mayor's Office, and a number of city agencies. And all of this is being brought to us by our amazing legislative staff, Margaret. Once again, pull these web-based hearings off. Before we start, I'm asking all speakers and panelists to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak so that we have a clear record of who's speaking. Speak slowly and clearly. And after you're finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you're asked to speak again. We are meeting to discuss two resolutions. The first is Council Resolution 20-0217R, informational hearing, sanitizing of buildings under rental assistance demonstration and HUD regulatory authority. And the second is Council Resolution 20-0220R, Department of General Services update on sanitizing city-owned buildings. The resolutions are companion in nature, and both provide information pertaining to the sanitizing of buildings. Therefore, we are going to hold both hearings together simultaneously. I do not see the Council President on the line, so we are going to ask the sponsor of both resolutions, Councilmember Stokes, for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council Bill 20-217R came to my attention because I looked at when the COVID started in March of this year, and I looked at actually some of the nursing homes and what happened to most of our seniors in the nursing homes. And I had been getting calls from a lot of the seniors about are they sanitizing where they are because they physically don't see it. So when you physically don't see it, then a lot of times our seniors get uncomfortable. So the idea of the resolution was to get an update from HUD on how they sanitize their buildings, what day they sanitize, and what time, and if that can be posted in a nice common area so our seniors will feel comfortable enough that they know it's being done. Because I get calls, they say they said they did it. But a lot of the seniors don't come out their apartment, and they don't hear the noise. So they assume they were not sanitized. And with this COVID-19, we got to make sure our seniors are safe. And when they come out their apartment and go pick up their mail in the mail area or go to the laundromat where the laundry room is, we want to make sure they feel comfortable. So the idea was to get an update from HUD on the sanitizing of the building and can they post it in a common area so when the seniors come down, they can see what date, time they sanitized the building. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and thank you for your advocacy on this. It's a very important issue, especially since we know a lot of our older adults are especially susceptible to the impact of COVID-19. So I appreciate you stepping up on this and putting this out there for us to consider and hear back from these agencies on what they're doing. So for agency reports, we're going to start with the reports that we received for Resolution 20-217R. And it looks like DGS and Department of Housing and Community Development have taken no position. I would just ask quickly, do they stand by the reports? And then we'll go to HUD.
Mr. Chair, this is Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. DHCD, they do stand by their report, and they send their regrets that they weren't able to join the hearing today.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Councilmembers. This is Eric Schuler, Department of General Services Deputy Director, and we do stand by our report.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to go to the Housing Authority of Baltimore City for response.
Good morning, Councilman Burnett and Councilmembers of the Health Committee. This is Bill Wells, I'm the Senior Vice President for Business Strategy at the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. We are HUD-funded public housing authority for the city of Baltimore. And as such, the HUD funds for low-income public housing as well as the Housing Choice voucher programs flow through the Housing Authority. Wanted to take a moment, Councilman Burnett, to point out that we don't speak necessarily for HUD. I think the bill was broader than just the purview of the Housing Authority. So I want to make sure that, you know, the Council understands there are HUD properties within the city of Baltimore that the Housing Authority has no relationship with. So the comments that you'll hear from myself, Angela Cameron, who's also at the Housing Authority, as well as representatives of private management firms who oversee the RAD buildings that are or were part of the Housing Authority's portfolio, that's what we can confine our comments to today. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had that understanding to begin with. RAD, the Rental Assistance Demonstration, is a HUD program that allows public housing authorities to make up for past shortfalls in capital funding that have left assets in public housing with serious needs, capital needs, improvement needs, that there are not the funds to remedy. Housing Authority Baltimore City started with RAD in 2015 and has converted 23 different properties under RAD. And this involves partnering with and soliciting publicly a redevelopment partner. And it changes the ownership structure of those buildings such that they can be redeveloped and then operated as essentially public housing under new management. At that point, the Housing Authority takes on an oversight role. We have some mandated reporting that Angela will speak to about our relationship with the RAD buildings and the private managers, but also an oversight and a connection role with the managers. Those residents who are there were either residents prior to RAD conversion or since came from the public housing waiting list into the RAD properties. So of those 23 properties, 17 of those are high-rise and what are considered mixed-population buildings. They contain or are reserved for seniors or non-elderly disabled residents. And we felt that that was where the questions really were from this bill and confined our comments to those. These are also the areas that have the large public areas. We'll hear from, I believe we have eight management representatives who are here today to speak to their specific practices. And those eight management firms oversee those 17 properties. But I wanted to make that distinction as well just to understand the thrust of our response. So I'm going to, in just a moment, introduce Angela Cameron, who is our Vice President for Private Management. Private Management at the Housing Authority covers the RAD buildings. They also cover properties that might be HABC properties where HABC doesn't actively manage those properties. For instance, last year, up until last year, PO Homes was being privately managed and then was brought back to HABC management in July, at the end of June, beginning of July. So to give you an idea of that, I'll let Angela speak to that. Before Angela starts, though, I wanted to ask if there were any questions that the Committee had about the response that we submitted. My plan had been to introduce Angela and then let her introduce the representatives from the management companies to address specific questions about their properties and their practices.
Okay. Any questions from members of the Committee? Okay, hearing none, we can move on.
Thank you, Councilman. So I'd like to introduce Angela Cameron. Angela is our Vice President for Private Management and oversees the privately managed portion of the Housing Authority portfolio. The RAD buildings fall within that portfolio. Angela comes to us after an extensive career in private management of properties, and we're very pleased to have her. So I'll let her talk about herself, private management, and then introduce the private managers who are here to speak to you directly.
Great morning, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to participate today. As Bill indicated, my name is Angela Cameron, and I'm the Vice President of Private Housing for the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. The Private Housing Department oversees the properties that are properly managed in which HABC has a partnership interest. The Private Housing Office oversees the interests of HABC as outlined in various legal documents that support the partnerships. We assist with resident issues, oversee processes such as reasonable accommodation requests, transfer requests, formal grievance requests. We like balanced policy and procedure and the best interest of residents in the private management firms. Since the onset of COVID-19, we've worked closely with the private management firms. They have participated on weekly calls, which has most recently gone to every two weeks. This pandemic is new for everyone, and we pool thoughts and efforts and experiences to come up with the best results for the safety of the residents as well as the staff. If there are any questions, I'll take some now. If not, I will move on to introduce the private management firms that are participating on the call.
Looks like we have a question from Councilmember Stokes.
Okay.
Yes, it's just really a statement. Once we, this is, and I had when you're doing sanitizing, is there any way your buildings can post that information in a common area so our seniors at least have the knowledge of something what is sanitizing, what's done? And the reason why I say that because a lot of them called me and said, oh, yeah, they said they sanitized it, but I don't see nothing. I didn't hear anybody. And to make them feel more comfortable, is there any way that can be posted in a common area so they can see the date and time and what was done, I guess, in those common areas so they at least feel comfortable and don't have to call all the council people all over the city and say, they ain't sanitized because I didn't hear nothing? So something that's visible for them, maybe in the elevators or in the common area where they pick their mail up or laundry room. I don't know how you do it. But is that possible for that to be posted?
So, Councilman Stokes, what I'd like to do is introduce the private management firms because each management firm operates independently and has different protocols and procedures within their property. Some use third-party contractors, some clean in-house. And it would probably be best answered by them with the support of the Housing Authority. So I'll introduce, and then
Sure.
press your question first. So we have for Penrose, and they oversee, they manage Wyman House. We have Marcia Blunt on the phone or on the meeting. For the CT Group, who manages Ellersley and Brentwood, we have Tasha Etnia on the phone. For Enterprise, we have Jean Paul, and they oversee Allendale and Highland House. For Win Management, we have Xena Saunders. I'm not sure if Mike Milco is on the line. He was having a little difficulties. But they manage Bell Park, Lakeview Towers, and Chase House. For Residential One, we have Kwame Gray with Bernardi Mason, McCullough, Monument East and Govens. They're the management agent for them. For Community Housing Partnership, we have Margaret Potress on the line for J. Van Story. Branch and Primro Place, they're the management agent for them. For CSI, we have Brandon Moss, and they manage Terrace Garden Co-op. And for the Michaels Organization, we have Curtis Adams. And I'm not sure if Milton Pratt is on the line. I didn't see him show up, but he also may be joining the call, and they manage Pleasant View Gardens and Rosemount Towers. And I would ask, typically on our every-two-week call, we get great participation. I would ask that the management companies on the call provide some feedback on your position as it relates to the Councilman's question.
And before they start, just for the record, I have to pause for a second. I want to introduce, we've been joined by Councilmember Henry, a member of the Committee. Just need to put that on the record. All right, now we can go. Thank you.
Angela, could you just introduce each one as we go along, unlike a regular hearing where everybody's in the same room and
I didn't know if they would raise their hand and somebody I got you. I can handle it. All right, so I'm
If that's all right, Councilman. Okay.
Okay, all right. So I'm going from top to bottom on my list. Sorry, Marcia, but you're the first one, and you're usually very vocal at our meetings. So do you have a response for the Councilman's question? With Penrose? Not sure. I know she's on the call.
Let me see.
I don't see her on the attendees right now.
I see, I see her listed as an attendee, but that means she may have to be unmuted by the host.
What's the name, Ms. Blunt?
Marcia Blunt, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marguerite.
Good morning. This is Marcia Blunt from Penrose. Thank you for unmuting me. I tried to type in the chat box. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we actually at Penrose have a cleaning protocol that we've put in place for COVID-19. We have so many different new protocols and procedures, obviously, with COVID-19. And so the procedure is, we have cleaning tools, which we have listed, and I'm just reading off of our procedure that we have, our standing operating procedure for cleaning for this, for the pandemic. And so we have, we make sure the team members have a bucket and mop, which are just general actual tools that we have, gloves, wiping cloths, sponges, hand soap, disinfecting wipes and solutions. And our senior vice president actually comes up with different cleaning solutions that may come on the market weekly that she shares with the whole company. We have concentrated solutions for cleaning, disinfecting wipes, and disinfecting spray. And the areas that we actually clean are the public door handles, the electronic or electric door access buttons, the lobby furniture. So I have to note that for our senior properties, we have removed the lobby furniture because we don't, we want to discourage group meetings, and we want to encourage social distancing. We also clean our exterior elevator access buttons, interior elevator cab, which includes the buttons, the ledge, the walls, gym equipment, even though all of our common area spaces are still closed, not just in our senior buildings, but in all of our properties. Play areas are also closed off. We disinfect our stairwell, hand railings, our trash chute doors, laundry equipment, buttons and handles. And we've also set up the process of doing recurring work orders to remind our team members so they, even though I'm sure they will not forget, but we want to make sure that we have that part of our, as part of our procedure. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, but that's all I have, and we make sure that this is taken care of. And actually, the Housing Authority does go and do spot visits with us to check to make sure that we are maintaining our property.
So in preparation for this call
It looks like Councilman Stokes has a question.
Councilmember Stokes? Sorry, I missed that. Thanks.
My question was, again, will you be able to post that information in a common area? I know when you clean the bathrooms, that information is posted in the bathroom. And again, it's because the seniors called and saying, we don't see where, hear them cleaning. We don't see where they're cleaning. Is there any way that can be posted in the common areas when you do the doorknobs and the sanitizing? So at least they can see that posted, and something's being done. Because I've been getting a lot of calls since this COVID started, the seniors saying they don't feel like nobody's sanitizing. One, they don't come out. Two, they might not hear. So when they come out, they still don't see no posting saying what was done that particular day and what time.
We can absolutely
Same way you post it when you clean the bathroom.
Yes, sir. We can absolutely post at our senior properties in Baltimore. That's not an issue at all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So maybe, this is Angela with the Housing Authority. Maybe the better way to go about this is to just ask if there are any management firms on the call that are opposed to it and if they can state their position, why they are. And if not, the understanding will be that they will post the properties. Some additional things that we do, Councilman Stokes, the private management team goes out and does site business every two weeks. We walk the building, make sure that there are the properties properly posted for COVID with signage in the elevator for a minimum number, a maximum number of people, social distancing signage, reminders about washing hands and where, washing their hands and wearing face masks. Our team calls the leaders of each community every two weeks as well just to get a pulse on what's happening at the sites. So we are open to any other suggestions. I think your request is manageable and is something that could be done. And the best way to go about it, just in my experience with working with the private management firms, is there anybody on the call from the private management firms that don't think that's a good idea and would like to speak to that? Other than the understanding is that we would be able to meet that request.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, Mary Pat Clark.
Councilmember Clark? Sorry, I have one second, Councilmember. So it sounds like, before we move to your question, I just want to make sure we, any of the management partners that did have any opposition had a chance to respond. And I didn't hear anything, but I just wanted to make sure.
Hello, this is Curtis Adams with the Michaels Organization.
Sorry, Councilmember. All right, so we're going to go to Councilmember, I'm going to ask you to hold the question, and then we're going to go, we're going to go to you after Mr. Adams' response to Councilmember Stokes. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. The Michaels Organization certainly supports everything that's proposed and the posting in public areas so the residents can know when cleaning is scheduled. I just wanted to make the note, I'm not sure of the specific language in the bill, but if we can be afforded time windows in a given day, I'm just giving an example, between the time of 8:00 and 12:00 p.m., on a given day, there's certainly surprises that happen, different things we must address. And plus, especially with third parties, they're coming from other properties, so they, they might be caught up. On one property might arrive late. So I just wanted to make sure that we can at least be afforded a time window for when we state we will be cleaning public areas.
Mr. Chair?
Do you have a follow-up to that, Councilmember Henry?
I do. I just, really, I'm looking also for a clarification from Councilman Stokes because the way I interpreted his concerns, it was a, an after-the-fact kind of thing. It was if seniors could go into a public area and look and see that it was sanitized at a certain time. And so I'm not sure how much of a need or desire there was to try to lock the property managers into a specific set of windows. It was whatever your existing cleaning schedule was, if you could just post that so that people would know when it had been done and when they should expect it to be done. Is that, is that what you were saying, Councilman?
Absolutely, Councilman. I didn't worry about the windows. It's just the posting and what day and time it was done. That's, that can be very difficult when you have emergencies in the building. So that, I did not want, just the posting piece. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Clark?
Well, on that same note, you have all these, I think, seven people representing more of these private housing complexes. And I was just thinking what my colleague was thinking. What goes on the notice? So all of a sudden, now there are notice, they should all be, I think they should all kind of be the same so you can print them up or something. But, so it says, dear residents, today we sanitized what? I mean, in other words, what do you want, how, what do you want the sign to say? And how is it designed so you can use it over and over within, you know, you can use it over and over again, and it's kind of uniform for all the different establishments? So at least, so that's what I'm asking. I think it's a good idea to post to verify that certain cleaning has occurred at a certain time. I think that's been established. Thank you. Now, the idea is, what does it say? How does it do that? Are you going to say what was cleaned? Or just say we cleaned? So I just think the contents of it, and maybe, Ms. Cameron, you might have some ideas. But a note that goes up that's for the residents needs to kind of say what got cleaned? Or, or you have a separate list somewhere of the daily cleaning requirements, and you say the daily requirements of cleaning and sanitizing have been met as of today, the X of August 2020. I don't know. What do you think, Ms., it's Cameron? I'm sorry. Do you have any ideas? I just think that's what stops things is all of a sudden, what do we say on this thing?
I believe in order to allow the management firms some flexibility, but also be informative to the residents, was pretty good is to, for them to document their cleaning schedule and sign off daily that it was done between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00 or 8:00 and 4:00 so that the residents know that those areas have been sanitized. I mean, there are different procedures in the event that there is a positive COVID-19 case and they send out notification for that. I think it's equally as important to continue to support the thought that you should think that everybody has it and you should operate accordingly. So even if they just wipe the elevator buttons or high-touch areas like doorknobs, the big thing is educating the residents on the importance of just every day, everybody that you come in contact acting accordingly as though they have it. That was a conversation that we had with the Health Department here regarding another issue at one of the buildings. And that's the way they approach it. And I think that in support of this effort would be the best way. So yes, a list of what their cleaning practices are, and then just a daily sign-off that these cleaning practices have been
That's a great idea. So they get, everybody gets a list of what you mean by daily cleaning and sanitizing practices. And then the sign just says, these occurred at noon on Wednesday, the 19th of August in this building, or something like that. And so I'd like to just request that when you all decide what the, how to work the signs, that you could submit them to the Committee and to Councilman Stokes.
Yeah, but that would, that would be on an individual basis on the wording. Most of the management firms refer to their legal counsel for documentation and writing. So we can follow up with a separate call from the private management firms, and I can gather that information, and we could submit it.
I just have a question real quick. The person that does the cleaning, when you say sign-off, their signature also be part of the, having their signature on that paper also? when you say sign off, their signature also be part of the, um, having their signature on that paper also, am I correct?
I would be okay with it, but again, I would ask the management firms to give their input, kind of speaking on their behalf and I would support the, the best outcome for the management firms.
Well, Mr. Chair.
One second. So we have, I want to, I do want to acknowledge I have, uh, Councilmember Risinger next. Sorry, it's a little bit more difficult to do this virtually. Um, so we'll go, I'll let them respond to Councilmember Stokes' request. We'll go to Councilmember Risinger and then Councilmember Clark.
So did, I'm sorry, did, just to, to clarify, did any of the, um, management representatives have any comments about the request from, um, Councilmember Stokes and, and Councilmember, uh, Clark?
This is Marcia from, uh, Penrose. Um, again, we don't have a problem with that. We have our team members actually signing off when they're checking, um, uh, you know, sprinkler systems and different things like that. So that should not be an issue. But like Angela said, we'll have our, um, in-house counsel review what we will submit and then we can go from there.
And the Housing Authority can, um, collect those, much as we did. There's an appendix, um, to our, uh, response um, to the committee where the management firms have detailed their practices and the products that they use. We can, uh, forward to the committee, you know, an additional appendix with that information, um, once it's provided by the firms, if that's acceptable.
This is Curtis Adams again with the Michael's Organization. We're, uh, the owner developer of Pleasantview Gardens and Rosemont Tower. I just wanted to add to what Marcia was saying. Um, just to perhaps have the option of either the personnel who did the actual cleaning or a supervisor who supervises that the cleaning was completed. Please.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable. Um, uh, I don't know if we put a chair, I mean, for the sponsor, but, um, okay, so let's go to Councilmember Risinger. You had a question?
This is Gina from Win Residential. Can you hear me?
All right, sorry. Oh, wait, we have another management company responding? Sorry.
Okay, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Hold on, Councilmember Risinger.
Hi, okay, and when, um, we can definitely, um, post, uh, a frame called board, um, our daily schedule and, um, we actually did purchase, um, some 90-day strips to cover our, um, handrails, elevators, um, et cetera. And, um, we will switch them out every 90 days. We also had a victory sprayer where, um, times daily, we are spraying a disinfectant cleaner throughout all of our common areas, elevators, throughout the building. We do have a third-party company here taking care of our cleaning. But we will definitely make sure, um, Councilman Stokes, that we post our cleaning schedule.
Thank you.
Okay. Did any other management company want to respond to that direct request before we go to Councilmember Risinger? I'm giving like a couple seconds.
Sure, my name is Jay Martin from Enterprise Residential. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, similar to other management firms, we too have implemented a cleaning regimen where three times a day we cut, uh, we sanitize common areas, the high-touch areas. So the elevators, doorknobs, entrances coming in and out of the building, mailboxes. Um, those are the areas that we touch three times a day and sanitize and at least once during the weekend. We have communicated this, um, early on in the pandemic with our residents via flyers. We have not experienced, um, some of the feedback that you all have received. Um, one of my issues is some of our properties where we represent Allen Dale, um, Heritage Crosses and Holland's Houses. Not every property is situated the same. So for a high-rise, we do touch every, um, common area, but for let's say a townhome style, uh, we leave that mostly to the residents, um, to deep their areas. So there's, there's a difference in sometimes the way that the property is set up that may call for different protocols for cleaning. Um, but for our high-rise buildings, places that have old common areas and things like that, um, keeping a log of our cleaning schedule, um, is, is not a problem whatsoever.
Thank you. Okay, you're in silence. I'm going to go to Councilmember Risinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question is to, uh, I think it's Primrose who manages Cherry Hill. I think I'm correct about that. And I, I heard the young lady say that they have their maintenance crews come through to do pre-maintenance, to check everything. Um, and I understand that, but that's separate in my mind's eye regards to disinfecting, uh, the building. And I know that if it's a high-rise and it's three, five or six floors, they probably can't go to every floor and every doorknob, to every apartment. But when the, the common area, uh, that they, they disinfect and the elevators, uh, that they have to disinfect, that it should be posted, um, that states that, uh, this area, these elevators have been disinfected and what days and what times they do that. And I want to know, uh, from Primrose now, what is their practice? What are they doing? And I'm using Cherry Hill as an example. It's in my district.
So, um,
This now in Cherry Hill.
Councilman, I wanted to, um, just ask a clarifying question about which property you're referring to because there's not a RAD, um, property at Cherry Hill that the housing authorities involved in.
No, I'm not talking about RAD. I'm talking about, they were talking about the private partnership that, uh, a private owner that has Cherry Hill Senior Housing. That's what I'm talking about. She mentioned Primrose and some other private owners that's taken over the senior housing at different parts of the city. Cherry Hill is one of them.
Gotcha. So I'm not sure if the, um, Marcia, if you're familiar with the property that, um, Councilman Risinger is referring to?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And so, Councilman, I don't know if you heard me in the beginning, but we are cleaning, um, all the common areas. The public door handles, the electric door access buttons, the lobby, um, areas, the exterior, interior, um, elevator cabs, um, the elevator doors, the buttons. Um, we're doing the stairwell, hand railings, the trash chute doors and, um, any other, um, common area, uh, um, equipment, doors or fixtures. And so we do not, we have not posted this. Um, but we do have our maintenance team members and we have a new standard operating procedure for COVID-19 cleaning. And so we are doing that at all of our buildings, Cherry Hill, Oaks at Liberty, Wyman, who we are, um, in partnership with, with the Housing Authority, um, Moravia, we are doing that, but we just, uh, we do agree that we can post something, um, daily. Um, have our team members sign off one, letting the residents know that we are doing our cleaning.
Yeah, that, that's appreciated. Are you also communicating, I know, I know like with Cherry Hill, they have a, uh, a manager, the president of, of the, of the senior housing complex. Are you communicating with them? I know they're probably not meeting because of the pandemic, but is there communication between Primrose and them so that they know that the, the building's being disinfected? Since there's no signs put up yet?
Absolutely, sir. Uh, we have a maintenance person that's, um, assigned to that property. The property manager and the regional property, the regional property manager used to manage the building. So she is very familiar with the president of the resident council. And so everyone is in, um, great contact with each other. And as a matter of fact, she also, the resident, the president of the resident council has my personal cell phone number where she can reach out to me if she has any, um, needs. So we are.
I'd still appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Councilmember Clark, you had a follow-up?
Yes, I'm just being tedious, but they depend on me to do that. Um, so I just want to say that I, I think it's great. Everybody's going to put up a poster and you're going to, and the Housing Authority bill, you're going to gather this all in your arms and get them to the committee. Um, and I know it's been said, but let me just say it again, putting myself in the place of residents. Obviously, along with these postings, every resident in these, um, developments needs to have a fresh list of what it means when sign up that says, today at noon, blah, blah. We have, um, cleaned and disinfected. Um, we have, we have done, we have met the standards for disinfecting and cleaning this property, whatever, however you want to use it. But sanitizing is different from cleaning. So I know that you're going to use sanitizing because that's where people are worried. But in other words, everybody needs to get a flyer that they can take up to their apartment and, and noodle over that says what it means when they put up this sign that says done. That's all. Thanks. And thanks for all you all do.
Thank you for your, uh, support, um, Councilman Clark. I really appreciate it. Yes, uh, that's my commitment to the committee to gather those responses, uh, from our, our RAD partners, the private management firms and to, um, get them together in, in one appendix back to the committee. Um, I would say that there are, um, you know, there, there are cleaning protocols. Um, I, the idea of sanitizing is, I'm, I'm not sure that there's definition of sanitizing. Um, and, you know, the, what we have are, you know, guidelines and, and standards that have been issued. I don't know that there are, um, requirements to the level that it sounded like we need to um, in terms of sanitizing spaces and, and, and that sort of thing. So, you, you know, the, the language will reflect, um, accurately what the, the firms are doing.
Thank you. Thank you for all your help, um, you know, for, for so many things. So thank you, Mr. Ralph.
Okay, uh, oh, Councilmember Stokes, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, real quick, um, I wanted to go and kind of go back on what Councilwoman Clark was saying. I know you, they group the, um, management do the regular cleaning, but I'm really focusing on COVID-19 and the sanitizing piece. And I think that's what Councilwoman Clark was talking about. Cause there can be some confusion about regular cleaning and sanitizing. This bill says sanitized, not the regular cleaning that the management company do anyway. So I want to be clear and I understand exactly what Councilwoman Clark said. Sanitized, not regular cleaning. Cause we have this COVID-19 again and we have seniors in this building and I want them to feel comfortable enough, they see the regular cleaning. We are talking about sanitized. And we talking about COVID-19. And that's what, uh, Councilwoman Clark probably wanted to get that conversation or that commitment from them to talk about the sanitizer, not particular, the regular cleaner. I don't want it to be mixed together.
Thank you for that, that clarification, um, uh, Councilman Stokes. Um, I think if you look at the responses that the firms put together in Appendix A that was submitted with our response to the committee, those are specific, um, cleaning routines related to, uh, COVID-19. So, uh, to your points, it's not, um, you know, sweeping and dusting, that sort of thing. Um, and I can, you know, let the private manager speak specifically about that. Um, I think what it sounds to me like you may be getting at is, um, making sure that the communication is clear to residents, that this cleaning is specifically to address, um, uh, the, the COVID-19 crisis. Um, and to, to make sure that the public areas of the building are, are, are healthy. Um, and, and don't pose an undue danger. Is, is that a, uh, an accurate, um, understanding of, of what you're asking for?
Absolutely. I just don't want to get confused. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for setting me straight.
Okay, um, are there any other questions or comments from members of the committee for this resolution before we move to the second one? Sounds like we have some, some action items. I'm excited about this. Councilmember Stokes, go for it.
I got one question. What is the timeline on when this will be started being posted? Can we, I know this is kind of a, uh, putting a question to you too quick, but can you let us know what the timeline of when it'll start in these, uh, senior, I mean, RAD buildings also? You don't have to give me an answer now, but kind of give us a timeline. Cause I need, we need to know when it's going to start. That's all.
Sure. And, and I can certainly court, help, um, Angela coordinate that so that you're just getting one response first about, uh, timeline and, and then about what was, what was posted and the, the procedures for posting. If that meets, um.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
While I have everybody on the line from my end, could you all send me an email today? Let me know how much time you need so we can kind of get started unifying the information. Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, hearing no more questions, we are going to move on to the second resolution. Um, twenty dash, uh, twenty dash two two zero R. Um, and since this sort of centers around, uh, DGS, I'm going to actually start with the Health Department to just, we do have your report. Do you have any additional comments? Uh, and then we'll go into the DGS for, uh, response on sort of the bigger picture.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment.
Go for it, go for it.
Can I just make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Okay. I, 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 this particular one is really important also because we still have city-owned buildings. We still have people going in and out of city-owned buildings. I don't know if they have been, uh, checked for the temperature or you got private company private city-owned buildings, private city going to city-owned buildings. And if we're going to open back up, and if I'm going back in City Hall, I need to know that for myself. But I think the city employees need to know that also, because you look at some of these buildings, some of the city employees have been quarantined because they went into one of the city buildings and possible maybe nobody worked in City Hall or somebody do or worked in city buildings have been diagnosed. So it's really important to, not just to the city employee, but I think to the council and their staff about the city-owned buildings having the same mechanism that we talking about with H A B C and HUD buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, uh, Health Department, I see DePaul on the line. Do you stand by your report or any additional comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. DePaul member on behalf of the Health Committee. We stand by our report. I'm actually joined by our chief of staff, Mr. Malcolm Green Haynes. Um, should you have any questions about our rule and sort of consulting with DGS on how to best reopen the city safely? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, and I see my favorite directors on here, uh, Director, uh, Chi Chi, I don't call you Director Chi Chi, Director Nash. Thank you for joining us this morning. Thank you, you're still on mute. Are, are we unable to unmute you?
No, I'm sorry. I was on mute. Um, I didn't know if Malcolm was about to speak up, but good morning, sir. Thank you. Um, should we go ahead?
Oh, yeah. So I think Malcolm was just here to just respond to questions. I didn't think he had a formal presentation.
Okay, absolutely. Good morning, everyone. Morning, Chair and members of the committee. Um, we are happy to, to be here to respond to, um, to this bill. I'm joined by, um, Eric Schuler, our deputy director, Terrell Chesson, who is the division chief of facilities, who will be, um, those who will be able to answer a lot more of the technical questions when we get to that. And Aleah Hendricks, who is our, um, legislative affairs liaison. Um, before I really get into the details of our response, I just, I, I, I would like to answer, um, Councilman Stokes' question or address his concern about employee screening, if I may. Thank you. Okay. Um, so, um, Councilman Stokes, there do exist already protocols, um, surrounding the need to screen. Um, at, at this point, it's primarily employees because for the most part, there are no city facilities that are permitting members of the public entrance. Um, there are very few, um, that have sought that, that, very few agencies or services within them that have sought the permission to be able to, to have members of the public access the buildings. But again, it's very few and far between. So the screening protocols that DHR has put out there, um, do govern exactly what kind of questions are supposed to be asked and those are based on CDC guidelines. And they also. And they also provide guidance on how to safely take the temperature for screening. Regarding the downtown complex, in addition to the DHR protocols and the screening that agencies are supposed to be doing, this is, it won't just be downtown, but to answer your specific question about City Hall access, there is a rollout currently happening of an app, an application called Imoka, which is, was developed by a local company here in Baltimore, a health information company, that has created an app through which, on your phone or at a kiosk, you can screen yourself. So for instance, if I were to go into the office today, I'm currently at home, working from home, but if I needed to go to the office, I would simply pull the app up on my phone, go through a series of questions where it asks me if I'm exhibiting any symptoms today, if I've been in contact with anyone who has tested positive in a certain number of preceding days, and then it'll ask me to enter in here what my temperature at the time of screening is. Depending on how I answer those questions, I'll either get a green badge, which means I'm fine, I'm screened, to enter the building, or an orange badge, which means DHR or, I'm sorry, RHR, or even a representative from the Health Department might need to interact with me to get a better understanding of. If I said I have, I don't know, I have a runny nose today, that's not one of the screening questions, but it might just be because I have seasonal allergies, and it's not necessarily because of COVID, and so they would turn the badge to green. If I screen very symptomatic, it would be red, which is a clear indication that I'm not allowed in the building. And so we are training our security personnel, as well as HR for every agency, to understand that badging system and what it means for access to the spaces. And so all city employees will be required to screen through Imoka, again, through their phone or through a kiosk, before they are granted access into the building. So I hope that, Ali, is any concerns you have about the protocols that are in place for screening individuals before they enter the workplace?
Councilmember Stokes, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I heard about that, but I'm glad you brought it up, because that was my next question to kind of explain that process. But you said City Hall, this is all city-owned buildings? Like when this little building, everybody gets that app?
Yes, sir.
And my other question is, we just did it with the rad buildings, with the sanitizing, will that cleaning be posted in a common area, not the normal bathroom cleaning, and you posted it? Will the sanitizing be posted? And, okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, sir. So I can get to.
And just the timeline, when it'll start also.
Yes, sir. So I did hear some of the questions that you proposed to HABC, some of their private property managers regarding terminology and definitions. So there are three specific terms that I'm going to use as I explain this, and I just want to kind of define how I'm going to use them, whether they are the right definition or not. That's how we as DGS have been looking at them. So there's the regular cleaning. Regular cleaning is a set of requirements that we have for our janitorial companies, for how, the frequency with which they're supposed to cycle through the bathrooms, the, you know, the areas that they're supposed to wipe down. So in some cases, it could be every, so once a day, they have to go to every bathroom, wipe down the sink and the faucet knobs and the door handle, and then every two weeks they have to vacuum. So those might not be the exact kind of timelines, but that's just an example of some of the requirements that we have for regular cleaning. And then we have sanitization, which the way we're defining that sanitization is the increased level, the higher scope of requirements that we've placed upon these janitorial companies to do more frequent, again, we're calling it sanitization, of the high touch points. So if in a pre-COVID world, the regular cleaning cycle was, once a day you go into the bathroom and you wipe down the faucet and the sink, and you, you know, brush the toilet and make sure that it's clean, now with sanitization, it's, you do that three times a day, you have to wipe down the high touch points a lot more frequently, that's door knobs, elevator buttons, the same things that you heard from the group that presented before us. And the, not restrictions, but the details on what we're requiring of them go beyond just the frequency, but also the materials. So we're requiring that they use certain disinfectants or certain cleaning materials that we know have met CDC recommendations or guidelines for these sanitization purposes. And then the last one is decontamination and disinfection. So that's, that's like, that's the extreme level that we hope never to get to, but I mean, in reality, we have been getting to it. And that is when we know of a COVID-positive employee having been in the workplace, or having utilized a city vehicle, as part of that agency's responsibility to report to the Health Department, for them to do their contact tracing. Concurrently, they also need to report it into via Web EOC for the deployment of a decontamination team. We made the decision early on as DGS that we were not going to put our employees in a position where they were doing this decontamination. One, they're not trained in it, they don't, they're not trained in how to use the chemicals, they're not trained in donning and doffing of the full PPE gear that they would need for it. And three, they just, we didn't have the capacity to commit for them to be able to stop what they're doing and immediately respond to a decontamination. So we have about five, five or six vendors that we have vetted, vetted in terms of their protocols, again, the materials that they're using, their experience with things like asbestos abatement, which gives us a sense of comfort, that they know how to respond to environmental issues in the workplace or in vehicles. And so, again, when we get notified that there's been a COVID-positive case in any city building, not just the 71 or so that DGS owns and manages, we then call one of those vendors and they deploy, we try and get them out there as soon as possible, and they follow the protocols for fogging the space and then doing an in-depth wipe down. So that's decontamination, disinfection, they're kind of used synonymously. So again, regular cleaning, sanitization, decon, disinfection are the three levels that DGS looks at for keeping our buildings clean and safe. To answer specifically your question, Councilman Stokes, about posting, we currently have an order in for signage to that exact, to that exact point. So we will be posting in common areas signage that indicates what this new higher level of cleaning and sanitation in the buildings looks like, so that our employees, our visitors to these spaces can get a sense of what has been done in an effort to keep them safe and healthy. So in about two weeks, we expect that order to come in, and we will start posting it, posting them.
Mr. Chair, I want to hug up the meeting, but I have one more question, if that's possible.
Yeah, go for it. Where's yours?
I'm looking at the, not the reactive part, but the proactive part. Director, is it any way that we can just sanitize those city buildings? One time, the third step you were explaining, instead of waiting to hear that somebody had COVID-19 symptoms, can we just do sanitize each one of those buildings with that group that you said that really have to know the training? Is that possible, that it just happened in all city buildings, so we don't react to, oh, somebody got diagnosed with COVID-19, then we use that group? Is it possible we just use them now, so it cuts down on it?
I would, I would counter, so we certainly could go through the exercise of decontaminating all the spaces. One, it would cost us a lot. It would be cost prohibitive, because it is, it is not an inexpensive activity to decon even just two offices, because they have to go through a great deal of closing off the vents and making sure that the fogging material doesn't seep out into other areas. It's not an undertaking, but money aside, even if we were to do that and just universally decon all our spaces, the very next time, if someone comes in tomorrow and they're COVID-positive, we're back to square one, and now we have to go back in and decon. So I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose that we do that. We do, and I'll invite Mr. Chessin to weigh in if I respond incorrectly on this, but we do have, we're working with, okay, but we're working with a vendor that we're going to insert into our process, where they're going to be applying, I think by spray mechanism, a coating that is supposed to provide some level of antiseptic kind of powers to the surface that it's sprayed upon, that should make it a little bit harder for the virus to be able to kind of take hold and live happily on that surface. Terrell, if I didn't explain that right, please talk about the 1690-day protective coat that we're going to be applying.
You summed it up, you summed it up pretty well. It's just a, it's a solution that is applied in the same way that we do the standard decontaminations. It's a fogging application. Application is a solution that essentially bonds to whatever surfaces it's exposed to. It follows the same guidelines as far as being low VOC, it's non-irritant. The coatings usually last between 30 and or 90 days, depending on the particular vendor and their product that they're using. But we are, we are looking forward to starting a proactive treatment for certain buildings, i.e. the high-traffic buildings with common areas, to do that just as a additional measure. That should help, that should help with a lot of, a lot of the preventive measures that we're already putting in place, but it will, it'll give us a little bit of an edge, so we can, I want to say, it's not, it's not a, it's not a taboo that will protect everything or any, you know, any possible occurrence, but what it does is minimize the chance that we would have an exposure. So we're working to put that into place now and get it through procurement, to have that as a routine treatment as people begin coming back to the buildings.
Thank you, Terrell.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Reisinger?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to follow up or piggyback on Councilman Stokes, and you don't mind me calling you Chi Chi?
Not at all, sir. That's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. I just want you to walk this through. I know that when I go to visit hotels or other businesses, when you walk in, they have the mechanism to take the temperature, and I see that they have employees that spray bottle, and they're spraying all the door knobs, the equipment and all that. So it would, for me, to understand your process, is that, and I know you're interviewing vendors and for your protocol, but let's use Benton, because they have, they have different agencies, HCD, HABC, transportation, planning, they have a lot of foot traffic. So two entrances, one on Baltimore and one on Fayette. So have you developed a model or protocol, like are there going to be cameras or temperature mechanisms set up, that people come in, their temperature, either they're going in to get a permit or go to planning or HCD or transportation? Are they going to check their temperatures? And these signs like saying, do you have any of these symptoms, and you must wear a mask? Do you have? Go ahead.
So we don't have, we are still exploring what that technology could look like, and kind of what it could cost and what it would mean for us to install that. In the meantime, though, particularly at this time, because we're not, we're not permitting the public at large to enter the facilities. And I have to say that, it's completely aside, but it's been really impressive to me to see how agencies have pivoted and been able to continue providing their services remotely or by phone, and not necessarily needing the public to come into the, into the buildings, but still providing services to the constituents. So, but to answer your question about what, I don't know, what procedures are in place for a building like Benton, that is a multi-tenant building, I'll go back to my original response to Councilman Stokes about the Imoka app. So right now, all those, again, just using Benton, all the employees of planning HCD, HABC, are all going to be using the Imoka app. If they opt not to use it on their phone, then they will have to screen at a kiosk and for now, for the foreseeable future, for the kind of City Hall Downtown War Memorial Complex, that's the Cummings Building, Benton, Ableman, and City Hall, anyone who works in one of those buildings and opts not to use their cell phone for the app, will be required to go to the War Memorial, stand in line, and be screened by six certified nursing assistants who are being brought on to do that screening. So they're the ones who will be, really, I shouldn't do this, because it doesn't look right, but they're the ones who will be pointing a thermal, a thermometer, and asking you the screening questions, and then doing the equivalent of what you could have done yourself at home, using the little demonstration that I did with your phone and just answering a few screening questions. Once you're screened at the War Memorial, you'll get a color-coded wristband, color-coded for every, every day will be a different color, and then you just show that at security, which would be the equivalent of showing your green badge to security. So for those multi-tenant buildings, there will be screening happening at a central location. But again, every single person coming into those buildings is going to be required in some way to do the pre-screening. Did that answer all your questions?
Yes, I see that you're preparing and planning for employees to come back with this protocol. And then I guess you'll have that window of time to see how that works. So we'll fall away from saying, okay, general public, you're welcome back into the city buildings.
Absolutely. And it's not just for the employees who will be coming back. There are, there are a number of employees who never stopped coming in, and those are the ones that we need to cater to first. So the DPW, the refuse collection folks in the yards who never stopped coming into work, we need to get them Imoka at those yards, so that they can start screening using a centralized city system, where we can ensure that there is compliance. When agencies are using paper versions of screening, it's a little bit harder to, at a city level, manage for compliance and get a sense for who's actually screening and who's not. But with the Imoka, we'll be able to see if this whole yard that hasn't done any screening for two days, there's a problem there, because they definitely reported to work, why aren't they screening? So it'll be, it'll, it'll, it'll provide the 60s are and the Health Department and Risk Management a good high-level understanding of compliance. And just to clarify that, our moving to opening back up to the public won't, isn't hinged at all on our ability to rule out Imoka, it is driven entirely by the Health Department and the Health Commissioner's determination based on certain numbers that they look at to determine when it is safe for return. So we just, we are preparing for that eventuality, but we don't proceed until we get the green light from the Health.
Okay. Thank you, Chi Chi. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the committee on this?
This is Aleah Hendricks. I'm the Assistant to Chi Chi for DGS. I just wanted to reiterate or give some extra additional knowledge to what she was speaking about the Imoka app. Employees are being trained on how to use this app, so it's not just employees get this app, they don't know the process, they don't know the steps. So right now, employees are going through training to make sure that they understand the badging system and what they will need to present as they go back into the buildings. And another thing as far as the screening at War Memorial, it will also help us a lot with contact tracing, to find if someone comes back positive later on, where and when they have been in buildings, to keep knowledge of who needs to be notified and who needs to self-quarantine if they have had some possible exposure. knowledge of who needs to be notified and who needs to self-quarantine if they have had some possible exposure.
Thank you for adding that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So hearing no more questions from the committee, I do want to thank all of you for joining us. I need to, I think we do have a vote, but I'm not sure if Councilmember Clark plans to return, so give me one second, you all. I'm going to recess this for a second, reach out to her, and come right back.
Councilmember Brela, I'll give her a call. I'll hold it now.
Okay, so we're going to recess for two minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I reached her and she's signing back in now.
Okay, all right. So we'll spare another minute to join, and then we will move to vote this out.
Okay.
All right, looks like we've been rejoined by Councilmember Clark. All right. Let me pull, sorry, one second, y'all. Pull up sheet, okay. And I do know that Councilmember Henry had to go. He was also time-limited. All right. So we're going to move, is there a motion? So there's two, just to step back for the committee, there are two resolutions that we, before us, even though we did them jointly, just, just a wanted reminder of that. So there could be two votes on this. Is there a motion to vote on Council Resolution 20-0217R?
Right, second moves.
Second.
All right, moved by Reisinger, second by Clark. I am a Councilmember Burnett. I am a yes. Councilmember Henry is absent. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisinger?
Yes.
And I see Slifer on here. Councilmember Slifer?
Yeah, I'm on here, yes.
Okay. And is there a motion to vote on Council Resolution 20-0217R?
So moved.
Second, Reisinger's second.
Okay, moved by Clark, second by Essinger. Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Henry is absent. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
Okay, Slifer's a yes. All right, both motions passed. The committee will report both resolutions. The resolutions will be placed on second reader at the next council meeting, and the full council will review and take a vote at that time. If there are no other business, the committee is now adjourned. Thank you all for joining us this morning.